This is just here.
All right, it is six thirty-one, so we will go ahead and get started. Welcome, everyone, to our October regular Board of Level Trustees meeting. Before, well, no, let's call the roll. Secretary, can you call the roll?
Yes.
Trustee.
Here.
Trustee Butler?
Yeah.
Trustee Fairfax?
Here.
Rogers.
Rogers. Trustee Rogers.
I'm so ready.
Trustee Wilkinson?
Here.
And President Booth?
Here.
And myself, sorry.
I think Carter.
Did I call it, sir?
Oh, you didn't. I thought it was Carter.
All right, everyone is here then. I do, before we get started with the agenda, want to call to everyone's attention, not just here, but anybody who's watching, we are doing things slightly different from our regular order. We have moved new business up to item number four, so that we have ample time to talk about the budget and hopefully get that done and dusted this month, so that it can head over to the village. So everything else is to be after that. Any questions on that before? No, okay. Approval of the minutes, we have four sets of minutes here. Finance committee from the eleventh, strategic planning meeting from the fourteenth, our regular board meeting on the sixteenth, and the governance committee meeting on the twenty-second.
Do we need motions for each of them, or just all of them?
I don't know. Do we need to have a vote? Okay.
I make a motion for the finance committee.
Second. All those in favor of approving the minutes from the September eleventh Finance Committee meeting, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Abstentions?
Same.
So we have one abstention, Trustee Fairfax. September fourteenth, strategic planning meeting, I will entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
Motion?
Seconded. Motioned and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Minutes are approved. September sixteenth, regular board meeting minutes, I will entertain a motion to approve. Seconded. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? And finally, September twenty-seventh, twenty-second, governance committee meeting, I will entertain a motion to approve those minutes. So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Abstentions?
Same.
Wasn't there?
One abstention from Trustee Fairfax. All right, that concludes all of the minutes approvals. Public comment, do we have anyone here for public comment? I don't think so. And you didn't receive any other?
No. Received one that was retracted.
Yes, we should say that. We received one that was then retracted, so we are not reading it this evening. That brings us to new business, draft three of the fiscal year 2026 budget. And this is an action item, so the objective will be for us to have a discussion, to come up with a decision, for us to vote on that decision, so that we have a number by the end of today to send to the vote.
Are you ready?
We gotta stretch a little bit first.
After last month's robust discussion, and then also a follow-up discussion at the Finance Committee meeting last week, we have put together three drafts of a budget for review tonight. Two of them are conventional budget, and one is a more memo form, and it's more of an aspirational budget. So two conventional drafts that are in front of you, draft two and draft three, we'll talk about those just briefly, before we talk about the aspirational budget. Draft two is the operational budget, the operating budget is the same as draft two that was presented last month. There was a change to this draft two document, it's carried into draft three as well. It's in the capital expense section, so if you're in the board packet, you can see on page. It's a very important distinction to know. So if we go on page fourteen of, sorry, wrong one.
Fifteen.
We're all, maybe one of us will be. It's draft two, it's page four of draft two, so.
Page eighteen.
Page eighteen, eighteen.
Oh, okay.
Maybe not it. So on page eighteen, note that in the building improvements line, that line increased by fifty thousand dollars in draft two and draft three. That's because the master facilities plan project that was in this budget, in these budget drafts all along, we had a placeholder of about one hundred thousand dollars for that, of one hundred thousand dollars for that project. But we learned about a month ago that that would actually be closer to about one hundred fifty thousand dollars if we seriously wanted to tackle, to tackle it appropriately in 2026, so one hundred fifty thousand dollars. So that's what's represented. There's a change there, and it's carried, it's in draft two and it's in draft three. It doesn't change the operating budget from what you looked at last month, but it does change the capital expenses budget. And the capital expenses budget of seven, the total of seven hundred twenty thousand still is within the target range from our fund balance policy, what we'd be looking to spend. So draft two again is same as what you saw last month, just with that two thousand addition. Draft three, if we're ready to move on to draft three. Draft three is, it's draft two with three lines that changed, and all of those are in the people section. So, you know, last month we talked about creating a budget draft that perhaps allowed a little bit more nimbleness or flexibility, and, you know, we thought about that, and we went various different directions where we might go, but it really all comes back to people, and allowing Ellsworth and the leadership team some flexibility with the people expenses. So it adds seventy-nine thousand dollars, you know, going from a four-point-three property tax increase to a five percent property tax increase, is seventy-nine thousand dollars. And all seventy-nine thousand dollars of that is added to the people section. Ellsworth, if you want to elaborate on that, on the people section.
And Billy talks about, we sort of talked through a number of arguments for thinking about nimbleness. Really, those go down to two major components. One is the idea of a facility master plan. Anybody who's done those plans knows it's about more than building. So it's about visualing with the community, about making, just sort of the scaffolding for your future work. Those plans are expensive. We thought about putting one hundred fifty thousand dollars into the sort of active general budget, which would take us up to a five-point-seven percent levy increase. And in conversations with the Finance Committee and other folks on the board, it felt like that might not reflect the type of nimbleness that the board was imagining. Like Billy just framed out, the idea of putting some flexibility in the personnel lines would allow us to think a little bit broader about what is our work and who is doing that work. I want to be extremely clear that this adjustment to the budget does not mean new positions, it does not mean drastic changes in personnel, but it would give us some flexibility when we think about who we'll bring in for the Director of Communications and Director of Equity and Antiracism, would allow some adjustments to current salaries for staff who may be, maybe their jobs have grown or changed, which then would increase that enormous asset organization. So it felt like that brought the levy increase into a level that would feel, that may feel comfortable for the board at a five percent, and would allow us to think a little bit differently about some of our work. And I think if, if anybody has questions about more specifically, like, why couldn't that fund new positions, or things like that, we could talk about now or at a different time, but I think being realistic around what that change could mean is really important from long term.
Yeah, and why I got excited about draft three was because when we were budgeting for the people sections in drafts one and two, it's budgeting quite tight, and what I mean by that is there's not a lot of wiggle room for, like, what we have exactly, what we have today, plus the full year salary for the Director of Equity and Antiracism, plus adding a part-time public safety specialist, that's exactly what we can afford. There isn't any wiggle room in that, like, it's precisely in the salaries that we budgeted and that we budgeted and add. You know, as always, we could get into 2026, things can change, you know, we might have, but we have to count on things changing in order to have the order, a lot of the flexibility. If you, if you, or if you moved in favor of the draft three, that flexibility is gonna, a little more flexibility built in.
Billy, if I can ask you to take off your finance hat for half a second and put on your HR hat. Previously, you had provided a sort of a bell curve that showed how our staff was being paid.
Compensated.
Yeah.
Give everything to the library market.
Yes, thank you. Where, where would we fit in that? Do we still feel like we're making progress there, or?
Yeah.
Would this seventy-nine, would this seventy-nine thousand be necessary for us to keep our compensation goals?
No, if that were the case, I would have argued for it in drafts one and two.
Okay.
In draft one and two, and we've, so we've been focusing on wages and paying for the library market, paying, matching the library market for some time, seven years, eight years. And because we did that work, like, right now, an average of two-point-eight percent pay increases is what's needed, and that's been baked in since the beginning.
Okay.
To keep that progress. So, you know, the seventy-nine thousand isn't needed to bolster our compensation philosophy of matching the market. That's baked in. This is, you know, what if, you know, and again, I don't have an exact plan, like, this is what's going to happen, but like, what if, you know, the director salaries that we, the director salaries for the communications and equity and antiracism, we budgeted them at certain amounts, but we haven't actually hired them yet, and we don't know what might be negotiated in there, we don't know who we might find in some of these pools. And what happens if we learn we need a part-time position to cover, here's a real example, to cover, the Baker and Taylor is no longer processing our books for us, what if we find out that we need to do processing internally, we have the nimbleness to do that. We do, that doesn't exist in the drafts one and two of the budget. It does, it is a little bit, and that, you can't accomplish the world with seventy-nine thousand dollars, but you can, you know, get a little bit of wiggle room.
Thank you for asking that question. So I think that clarifies for me what's built in to the original budget draft was the costs for hiring, the two open director positions, and a couple other positions that are vacant right now, plus the average of two-point-eight increase to stay at, at library market.
Yeah.
Where we'd like to be. That's it. So this additional funding, there are some salary adjustments that I would like to make, coming in as a new executive director, kind of looking at the landscape of our higher-level staff, and then the examples that would be, I think, are perfect in terms of, it would just, would allow us to enter those conversations in an authentic way around what is the compensation then? Is it, is it gonna work for the work we want done?
How ready do we feel like we are for doing a master facilities plan?
Ready, I think. I think that we would be able to engage architects and others, I mean, I feel confident we could have something completed by the end of next fiscal year. I also feel confident, if we're not able to fund the whole project, that we could do parts of it next year and parts of it following year.
Okay.
Yeah, we talked about that, and that, we definitely want the facilities plan, but looking at the, just see what we could use from the half-baked one, or whatever we're gonna call it, and then see if we can spread that payment out over the two years. But also, it's in the budget anyway, it's just not right, it's just not part of the operating budget.
Correct, yeah.
It's still exists.
Okay, and then Billy, you said there was an aspirational number three?
Yes, yes, it starts on page nineteen of the board packet, it's an aspirational budget scenario.
Yeah, I was about to say, we guess we're.
Let me be clear, though, this is, this is the result of, you know, like, one brainstorming session with a little bit, like, a little bit of extra thinking. This isn't the end-all-be-all-inclusive everything that we would do, this is just to give you some ideas of some things that we came up during that conversation. And we kind of went into this, it's like, if you're gonna take that constraint of having the money available to do it, well, like, what would we want to do? And here, we tried to just capture some of the ideas, you know, from expanding services to enhancing facilities, and of course, focusing on people, having staff in the library unless it has to be.
I think when you look at these examples of sort of growth in our services, knowing what you know about how much money equals a percentage increase, I think it becomes clear pretty quickly why things like a facility plan are important, because we want to have a long-term plan for when would we bring in a fleet of vehicles, when would we, so how would we do these things strategically? But I think that they're evidence-based ideas, that if we were to get a ten million dollar grant today, that could be expended by, you know, the end of February, that these are some things that we would be confident about.
Yeah, and expanding services, enhancing facilities is something that would be, come up in the master facilities plan project, Billy, it's all, like, and what I like about the master facilities plan is have, like, having a plan that we can, and having, these projects that are shovel-ready when, when we, or we can ask for the funding, we'll find the funding, and they're ready to go. So, yeah, and, sorry, excuse me, but the.
Oh, I just had a few, I mean, I know that this is, you know, kind of, just a brainstorming, and it's not what we're necessarily talking about today, but I did have some questions. One was about the, like, the shifting the desk on the second floor, just curious kind of what the issues are. You're talking about patron experience, improving the optimized workflow and patron experience, and then there was also, just grouping together, because they've all been in the same area. The lobby setup would be completely reevaluated and redesigned, and the idea to create a more inviting entrance, perhaps include a marketplace-style browsing experience, so that in particular, I wanted to understand what you're talking about.
Marketplace is, is basically the middle library says, like, merchandising, so the new book area, that's a marketing, that's a merchandise or marketplace environment, so it may be targeted face-out shelving, we might put some more of our creative materials, anything that we want people to, to walk by as a.
There's no real, you know, there's one pillar with, there would be books on it, but there's not, like, shelves of books on there, you really have to come up to the second floor, so, kind of like when you go to a bookstore, and there's bookshelves. And then for the second-floor desk, currently, you know, when you walk out of this room, your, you know, their back is shaded, and so we would change the desks so that they could have a sightline to everybody.
Oh, I see.
Yeah.
I saw that it would still face, because it's nice, I think it's nice when you come up the stairs.
It is, but it is also, when you walk out of this door, you're looking at their back, you know.
And the working idea, without having an architect input, would be to reposition it so that the staff entrance to the desk will sort of against this wall, so it would still face both the stairs and this direction, just sort of, like, if you were standing at the desk looking straight ahead, you'd kind of look across the library this way.
Okay.
And we've had.
I was wondering, like, and patrons said something.
Yeah, it's also the staff, the staffer, the staffer was saying more things about this, because of the, like, the safety issue too, a lot of things happening behind them, and it's wide open behind them as well. If you had the wall behind you, it'll feel a little safer, but, and also, when you come up the stairs, it's a, and this could be either pro or con, depending on how you look at it, but as you come up the stairs, the first thing you're immediately walking to is this wall of the desks. That might be what you want, that might not be what you want, so.
Our desks are so reflective of when this building was designed. They're sort of the old-style monument desk, you know, staff sit behind here, it's not gonna move, it's built into the floor. Most likely, if we did just went to that, it would be something more flexible, so if twenty years from then, workflow changed, we wouldn't need to, you know, remove the wiring from the concrete of the floor. And I think that the library has worked around the built-in furniture for a long time, and we can make it work, and it's okay. If we were looking at aspirational changes, the big desks on the second and third floors, as well as the lobby setup, which has been changed significantly since the building opened a couple of times, that we could make sure that people are able to see the staff and be greeted actively when they come in the doors.
So that's the idea of having more flexibility. I just, when, you know, you're talking about patron experience, I just don't know if there had been kind of input from that, but it sounds like it's coming more from staff. Then in the area of staffing, the things that I was particularly drawn to are the offering medical coverage, you know, and again, this is, you know, aspirational, but includes all staff members, or at least those working twenty hours or more per week. That, and then the, you know, the idea of converting more staff to full-time, like, those, I think those are things that on the board, we've talked about for a while, so, yeah. But these would take a significant amount more.
Yeah, and I included some numbers there, just as a back-of-the-envelope calculation. If you're talking about offering medical coverage, I would have to, I did not, this does not include a conversation with our insurance brokers and insurance pool, because there are, I'm sure there are other costs that, like, other indirect costs that, I'm not, this might be the one year just to get them covered, but I think there's also other costs, because there's self-insure, self-insure as well, and, you know, adding forty more people into the city, the coverage would shock, shock the system and cost more. It would be more sensitive than this, but this is just to get them, just to give them coverage at our current rates. But yeah, I mean, it's, anything's possible if you're, if you're the money holder.
Right, and those are the things that particularly, as we look forward, like, something that is increasing livability for staff, you know, I think is, is sort of thing that I would be.
Yeah, and that would require a ten percent levy by itself.
Yeah.
A ten percent levy increase by itself, just to get the medical coverage added.
That, that's not including the other four to five percent.
If you're gonna do it this year, it would be fifty percent.
Fifty percent, yeah.
Let's do it.
Yes, let's not do that, but I think having these ideas here and thinking, you know, about priorities, I think does help in terms of thinking about where we want to be this year, and kind of how to, where to head toward.
I mean, not just that, but, you know, one of the reasons that we asked Billy for a nimble budget was, we said, we don't know where the world was going, we don't know. This gives us sort of a pick list of, as we see things changing, what do we want to prioritize maybe for the next fiscal year, or what, what are the things that might get built into the budget out of necessity, if these are the things that staff's already calling out? Like, I saw public safety staffing, you know, is that going to start becoming more important? Is that something that, you know, come summertime, we're gonna have to make some, some decisions on, other things coming out of the budget, but it's good to see that, like, we sort of have a list of where those things are, and that the staff and the team have sort of thought about what that would cost, and where that could potentially fit if we had to. Not that some of these things would fit, but.
The public safety, there is a public safety team member in number two and three.
Correct, apart, adding twenty hours, we've added twenty hours of coverage, but with the plan of adding some coverage to the branches, but the branches aren't open twenty, just twenty hours a week, and so, like, it's gonna get some presence, and we're gonna work with, you know, the public safety team and the patient services team to figure out, like, when are the best times for public safety staff to be there, because we, in order to cover it all, yeah, you need, you know, like, two or three more people, at least, something.
And what would that, would those twenty hours do in terms of public safety?
The current twenty hours that are.
That are in three.
Yeah, those twenty hours, it, it gives you a presence, certain peak hours at branch locations.
But what would that person do?
They'd do here, so they'd be present to work on if there were disruptions or behavior issues, but also to support staff and to kind of evaluate spaces for improvements, all of the, all the same things, the things that those teams, you know, do here.
Making rounds, checking in the staff, yeah.
So not the increase in, like, not connecting community members to resources, not that part?
I mean, I think, in the same way that all members of the team do that work, yes. If the question is, will this be a social worker trained in, in that community navigating? No, that would be a different staff ask, most likely.
Can I ask, is the, where is the interest in greater public safety staffing at the branches coming from? So I guess, can we just say some stuff?
From the public, from, sorry, from the patient services staff who work the branches, yeah. Now, those are versus, you know.
I was gonna say, you know, Jol's across from a school, and, you know, oftentimes we get some kids over there, just, you know, getting up to things. The fire alarm's been pulled a number of times, and, you know, the staff are trained, but if there is an issue, you know, they are there by themselves, same with Mays, you know, there's just, if something were to happen, you know, that is something that you have to, you're so fortunate here, that if something happens, there is a team that we call, and so we just would provide them with that resources. We don't get as many incidents, because those branches are more located in neighborhoods, but it does happen.
And branch staff can feel very isolated. We staff at branches extremely, so we're talking about two people often, and while it's less frequent than it may, we certainly have issues with mental illness, mental health, substance abuse, and our public safety staff are trained in de-escalation and other strategies that can really make a difference, especially when you're talking about such a bare and low level of library staffing, because at the same time, as somebody may have an issue with an overdose or something else, you might have somebody needing genealogy help or printing help, and sort of the, the library functions in their expansion include so many things that having another, having more presence in the branches from public safety, I think would be helpful to staff and the community in a couple of ways.
Thank you for expanding the outline, providing some examples, just to imagine what that need is and how that would be best.
All right, do we have any other questions for Billy before we start discussing where we would like our budget to sit?
What?
Thank you.
Thank you. Vanished on me, so.
I would say thank you for putting it together, and I hope it was a helpful exercise. Like, I, I think it's really valuable as a board member to see how you all are thinking about priorities, and so I'm really appreciative of it, and I like to think of, like, what would we do if we had it all, so, I mean, we don't know what will change, and maybe one day we'll have, like, free medical care for everybody, and so then it'll be a moot And so then it'll be a moot point, but until then, we will keep fighting. So thank you for putting this together.
Yeah, I, I appreciate the opportunity to go through the exercise, to put some of these things in writing, some of these thoughts and um, things that we like, kind of combining what we're hearing from staff, what we're hearing from the public and just, again, this isn't everything, but these are some of the things. And, and it got me excited about the master facilities plan, because a lot of this will be captured in that exercise and it's fully flushed out, so.
This is definitely something we should, at the, on, as long as we plan that plan, we would, we would make sure that this kind of back to the social people.
Does the board have a role in the master facility side? Yeah, I don't think I, I don't think I was here to the last one, maybe, okay.
What did you say?
So it's a fun.
Yeah, because I have, I have dreams too.
It's aspirational, it's accurate.
The language was specifically changed.
Typically, there's both like formal focus groups with the board, but also other ways to, to get board input in those processes. Just, I just want to make sure everybody feels very confident when we're talking about the budget draft two, that's the four point three percent levy increase. The budget draft three is the five percent. I know we put a lot of things in front of you over the past couple of months. So the budget draft three with the five percent reflects the, the increased liveliness in the personnel lines. The four point three um, is the, the same draft that we saw last one.
I did have one question, there was a five and a five point, hold on, I'm sorry. A point two, but that was just because of the.
No, this five, this one, this one, in the language, it says five point three, but it's the five, it's the five percent levy, right?
Yes, yes. Resumes it, everything else. Revenue, total revenue is, is going to be in draft three by five point two percent. The property tax levy is going to be by five percent.
And why is the total?
Um, because of the way we budget for other lines, if I were to um, we put for the, for the interest line, this is true for draft two or draft three, for the interest, interest line, we budgeted more true to what we expect to receive, rather than trying to budget low and then letting it go over. So just, I mean, that right there is, there's some risk in that, you know, but that I guess is a major one, if anyone will change.
And why, that, you said that was done for two and three or just?
It's, um, draft two and three, the entire revenue section is the same except for the property tax number.
Okay.
So you'll see.
So you just made some adjustments, like why would you change that?
For the interest, it, it changed the, it's been the same since draft, draft one. Looking at how much money we were anticipating, or how much cash we had on hand throughout the year, the calculation based on an average interest rate, I think it was like three point nine percent that we would um, produce this, this income. Now, you know, if the economy completely changes on us, one way or the other, it's going to, you know, go off that, that calculation. But we're fairly confident in the number that's, that's there. That's in draft one, draft two and draft three.
Okay, that's all the same.
Yes.
I just think when I saw the five point two, I was.
Yes, like what else, what else would be going up, what else would possibly need to go up a little bit more?
Are you looking at the tool or the line at the top of the menu?
Are you looking at the, the area? But I could have.
Okay.
Does the finance committee have a recommendation?
Yeah, I was going to say our recommendation was the five percent. So we had a live discussion if it should be five or five hundred percent.
It was lobby.
But uh, we worked it out.
Mika sent me out with a five hundred percent lobby, that's true.
I was in the middle and we decided five percent was good. We feel like, well, they've already articulated what it's going to do. But um, yeah, and we're also very enamored with the, the, the um, facilities plan. But uh, to stay around five percent, we agreed with the money going to personnel.
You said you guys discussed um.
The five point seven, the five point seven.
Oh, I wasn't going to talk about that.
Yeah.
Um, you discussed um. Splitting the facilities, the facilities plan over two years.
Yeah, they were, uh, they were going to look into, is that even, it's not best practice, I think Billy said, but it's something that we could, we're going to look into, right? See if we can do it.
Okay.
Yeah.
What happens if we can't do it, what does that mean?
If we can't split the project, then we would probably approach next year's budget. So we're not the same question, but can we, can we actively fund?
I mean, I think it's important to say, like, the master facilities plan is like step one of four hundred and twenty seven thousand. Like, that's just the recommendation of the things we should do. Then it's going to be prioritizing and budgeting for the things in that plan. So the plan doesn't solve things.
But without it, you can't do anything, yeah, so.
We did discuss, I mean, this is more from me, that during our term, it would be nice if we got this facility plan going and potentially done. So at least there's, it's out there in the public on what needs to be accomplished. And it's been so delayed as it is, um, so it doesn't need to happen. But it's, it's not budgeted for in the recommendation, no. Sorry, I, I keep confusing this, it's not in the operation budget, it's still in the budget. It, it's in the capital. Yeah, it's in the capital. So we run a, so if I understand that, we would run a deficit in order to accomplish that. On, on paper today, if the year, if twenty twenty six years works out the way we budgeted for, um, if all the capital expenses isn't created deficit for us. But that's, that's how we've been budgeting since, you know, over ten years, um, and. Which essentially means it's all deferred maintenance and it continues to defer. Yes, and, and oftentimes, uh, what happens is we have more revenue coming in than what we budgeted for and less expenses going out. But counting on that to happen, depending on that, is not a prudent, um, prudent way to operate. So, um, but another, another um, plug for the master facilities plan is um, once we get that plan, then we can set up a capital reserve fund. Right now, we do not have, we don't, we don't have a capital reserve fund, we only have the general fund. And so you can set up a capital reserve fund, but one of the requirements of the capital reserve fund and funding it is you have to have a plan to, how you're going to spend it. So right now, we have no plan. No, no formalized plan, we should be our ideas.
Aspiration.
We'd like to talk about that too in the finance committee, we have a capital reserve fund.
So formal recommendation from the finance committee is five percent or so.
Yeah.
So do we have any other conversation on that?
Can you, um, just build me a simple, where?
Actually, well, Mika had a good point that I'd love her to, to express at first about the five percent.
Well, I think five percent, although arbitrary is a number I don't feel comfortable going over because of the truth in taxing and other things. It is a statutory number that I don't feel comfortable going over. So I was really, that was mine, I'm not going to vote five percent. The four point three to the five percent, adding that money to people and making people more flexible, I think it's a good idea. If we went with four point three, would it be the end of the world? No, my point was I wasn't going to go over, but I'm comfortable with that.
The, the other option was five point seven, which was mentioned earlier, but that, none of that money was going to go to personnel. That was only going to go to funding, bringing the um, the facilities plan into the operating budget. So if we had those two choices, um, which we, we decided that personnel didn't make sense with everyone else here.
But yeah, I mean, my recommendation between the four point three and the five, I, I like the flexibility. I think it gives us more power to do what we want with hiring these positions. But if four point three is really is a group, what we feel we need to do, I wasn't, Mika was not comfortable. No, but I, but that's, so five percent wasn't really five percent over four point three, it was five percent was the max that I felt comfortable.
And I think the five, it's, it seems to be in line with, with the other taxing bodies are doing. They're doing like fours and fives, well, they're.
Well, the village is going to go over five, yeah.
Oh, they are.
They're going to go over five, that's why they have to put it in the paper, so.
Any other questions, comments, commentary?
Thanks for your work on that, I'm happy to vote for five, so I don't know. I'm just not saying much because I, I, I feel like you all did the work and I'm just glad to be here and voting on it today.
Yeah, I am so glad we have committees. It's like so much faster than anticipated.
All right, so I will entertain a motion for the board to approve draft three of the fiscal year budget. That is the five percent increase. Do I have a motion?
Certainly.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Abstentions? All right, um, Billy, do you need anything else from us to?
I do, so that was, that was, you approved the draft three of the budget with the five percent property tax levy increase. But now you need to make it super duper official and I need you to um, to, to read, this is a, the board needs to adopt this resolution. I think you should read it verbatim.
Okay.
So the resolution title's at the top and then it does need to go to a roll call vote.
Ah, okay.
But once every time, let's say.
All right, resolution setting forth financial requirements for the Oak Park Public Library for the fiscal year beginning January one, twenty twenty six, ending December thirty first, twenty twenty six. Be it resolved by the library board trustees of the village of Oak Park, Cook County as follows. Section one, that pursuant to seventy five ILCS five four dash ten as amended, the budget of the Oak Park Public Library for the fiscal year beginning January one, twenty twenty six and ending December thirty first, twenty twenty six is thirteen thousand, two hundred, twenty thousand, five, sorry, thirteen million, two hundred and twenty thousand, five hundred. For inclusion in the budget ordinance of the village of Oak Park, the annual tax levy ordinance for the library will be eleven million, nine hundred and seventy nine thousand. Said levy to be made pursuant to seventy five ILCS five three dash five. Section two, that the secretary is hereby directed to file a copy of this resolution with the board of trustees for the village of Oak Park within the time specified by law for inclusion in the next annual budget ordinance and tax levy ordinance for the village of Oak Park. Adopted this the twenty eighth day of October, twenty twenty five pursuant to a roll call vote as follows. Mika, will you take a roll call vote?
Yes, uh, trustee Bernard Martinez.
Yes.
Do I write this?
You, you can write on it, I'm going to, I'm going to type it up and actually I'll have an official one for you to sign after, after the meeting.
Okay.
Okay. She, yeah, you can write on this one.
Just write. Trustee Button?
Yes.
Trustee Fairfax?
Yes.
Trustee Rogers?
Yes.
Trustee Wilkinson?
Yes.
And then trustee Yamono, yes, and the president, Lee.
Yes.
All right.
You can take the rest of the year off.
And um, yeah, I'll have the official one for you to sign before we leave, I'll, I'll type it up.
Okay.
Speaking on turn here, I think just taking a minute to recognize all of the work that went into this, including having four new trustees, a new executive director, a leadership team moving out of an interim period, shepherding all of us through the process, I think that's pretty great.
Yeah.
Thank you. Fifteen minutes ahead of schedule.
I'll see you in the top side.
All right, our second piece of new business, confidentiality of circulation records policy.
So this is a policy that was last reviewed in two thousand and two. It's a policy that, that I would like to reference in upcoming public tracing communication about the organization response to ICE in the community and how we protect our community members and our community members' information. In reviewing this with Ansel Blenk, we learned that while this was last reviewed in two thousand and two, which was when it was created, in two thousand and eight, the Library Records Confidentiality Act was amended by General Assembly. And then, as I mentioned in the memo, included um, different circumstances where a sworn law enforcement officer could access certain records without a subpoena or warrant. Those are detailed here. I, I of course inquired with the legal team, are there any options with this? And because the General Assembly amended the um, the Confidentiality Act, um, this is, this is the option. And I, I outlined the changes in why, why we are suggesting this, as well as included a red line of the policy. We also included a um, an emergency release of a permission request, which is not a mandatory part of the process. And it is not a part of the process that law enforcement is actually required to comply with. But it gives library staff the opportunity to, to check in with that officer and say, so we're asking you to recognize that, that this is an emergency situation and that it meets the criteria as defined in the policy and ask for them to give their basic information. I think the real benefit of adding that information, the, the information request form is that it's, it feels like sort of a check and a balance within the policy and will, will make the policy a little bit more active with, with, whether that was me or another staff member working with an officer to just again, be able to establish like, we have a policy, we have expectations, this is the, the, the legal parameters that we're working within. I would say not every library in Illinois has a second piece to this policy in the form of a request, but some do. And Ansel Blenk was, was in support of it, as long as we understood that we couldn't say, well, you didn't sign it, so we're not going to comply. But to me, it feels like an appropriate part of the policy.
Thank you so much for that explanation.
It, it's not an update that, you know, I think that.
So to be clear, this is limited to officers that identify themselves.
It's loaded to a sworn law enforcement officer in a situation where the record can assist in identifying a perpetrator, victim or witness or witness or subject, um, or subject to release. That doesn't mean full records, but it does mean some partial records. Anytime that we were using that policy, we would most likely reach out to Ansel Blenk with the specifics of, of the request.
Okay, my question was more around how do we verify that somebody is a sworn law enforcement officer? I know we did add the secondary page in hopes that we would have that information, that we would be able to get that and that would sort of be like our unofficial check and balance of, you know, what organization, we have a name. But the, the policy itself rests on the fact that this person must be a sworn officer. Do we have ability to, to know that or to check that? Or is there anything that the staff is able to ask for to say? The policy says you must be a sworn officer. I'm not like, not seeing an Oak Park, you know, Oak Park police badge on you. You've got to tell me who you are for this policy to.
My understanding is we can ask for their name, their employee, employee agency, owner of the server. And they, they may or may not sign those, but if we were not able to, to obtain that information, I don't think that we could in good faith lose the version.
Okay.
Well, I don't think that requires any, any changes, it was really good, I would just spell that out, so I really appreciate the asking.
Again, not, not changes I think any of those are happy making, but also not within our rights to change. So much better that we have this information available to our constituents. They have it in a place where they can find all of our other policies, they can be familiar with it. And also that the staff has it, they know that we've seen it and they know that we've had this conversation about who this applies to and when it is to be used and what they can. and when it is to be used, and what they can ask for. And this would always go through you, Ellsworth, and/or a member of the leadership team?
Yes, yes. So I would say if this request came in on an evening or a weekend, we would, we would not be in a position to immediately release the information.
So we're not putting this on all staff to manage it?
No, we expect all staff to be aware of our policies, be able to, to pull them and understand how they work. In policies like this, the, the practice expectation would be that they pull in probably first their supervisor, and then their supervisor would pull in an additional layer if needed. And I think just for the benefit of people who aren't in the room and may, may not be able to tell sort of the tone of the conversation, I feel confident that I and probably everybody in the room understands the intent of this change. And that if this was done in good faith in an emergency situation, that this, that, that the request for records did reduce physical harm, that we understand that and we support that. I think our concern is, is it being taken out of context.
How long do you think those, this is kind of related, but like, how long do libraries maintain those records for? Like a search, like a checked out of something?
Goes away, you know, the essential record.
Yeah.
That's usually like the ILS.
Yeah.
So it's just, just whatever's checked out?
It's just whatever's checked out.
Yeah.
If patrons have opted into their reading history, that still would take.
Yeah, it's still, but we can access that. From my understanding, you can access your reading history if you check that off.
So you can't release that?
And I think that it would be maybe surprising to some people. So if an, if an officer or even with a signed warrant or subpoena came in and said to me, I, I want these records. I do not have the login to get those records. There's always going to be a process that we go through. And, and that's acceptable. Most subpoenas or warrants would have, may have a stated length of time that you have to respond. If not, there's sort of an assumed turnaround. So we're not in a position where, again, a Sunday afternoon, staff member at a branch has to figure out, how do I pull up employees I nine? Right? Like, there are, there are lots of process, wraparound processes with this. And I think public libraries have such a rich history of understanding the significance of patron data and information and protecting it, that as Suzie just pointed to, our entire systems are built around this. So if we don't need it, we don't keep it. And I think that some people outside of libraries might just imagine that we have some kind of giant paper file with all of your information, your social security number, your birth certificate. And it, it just doesn't work that way by design. And, and we regularly review with collective services and other parts of the library, is there anything we're collecting that we don't need? And if so, how do we address that?
That's great. So no giant card catalog of all the things I've checked out this year?
I mean, we have a lot of paper, we know that.
All right, do we have any other questions for Ellsworth or Suzie? All right, then I will entertain a motion to approve the changes. So the changes and the addition of the form. Do I have a motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And we have adopted our new confidentiality of circulation records policy. Thank you, Ellsworth and Suzie, for going through all of the explanations on the nuance of, of that. All right, trustee comments and calendar. October twentieth, six P M, there was a finance committee meeting.
Yeah. Yeah, so we, and I think we covered a lot of it. I think the, and I can't remember, Billy's gonna talk about these things already, so forgive me if I'm getting ahead of myself, but the property tax is still the lead now for us or for, you know, everyone in Cook County, all the taxing bodies. And that's gonna start causing a serious problem here. You know, Billy was telling us he's never seen this map before. So we, there could be a serious financial issue that would require us to, to close the library certain days, other things like that. If we don't get any funding, there are multiple different options. There was a bridge loan, there was maybe credit from Byline, but ultimately we won't with this. Get its name again, taps, tax, TWA, what was it again? Tax. Tax, tax warrant, yeah, tax, accepting warrant, not TWA. And we had submitted that to the village and the village wasn't getting back. And one thing that Megan and Mika and I did, we reached out to trustee Etter and Taglia and President Scammon, and they did get back to us. So, and, and Billy, I mean, sorry, excuse me, Ellsworth's going to speak at, before the board meeting on November fourth.
Finance Committee.
Yeah, Finance Committee. And, and we're gonna try to be there in support, and Megan as well, and anyone else, right, from the board who can come support Ellsworth. I don't know if you want to speak more to that too, about what's going on.
We've submitted a full request, which gave sort of context and what the, the ask is and why. And then we submitted that to the village. They requested a letter of board support, which we put together and Colin and Virginia signed for us. So this is the next step of that process. So we're going to speak to the Finance Committee. I believe it's going to be very brief. So I'm imagining a five to 10 minute overview, that essentially goes over the same materials that we put together in the request. Sort of why are we in this position? What is our plan? What might be adjusted in the future? I think that the, the power of having trustees in the room is to show unity in the request, that, that we're all aware and that we, that everybody is in agreement of this and up to, up to date with the information. That being said, I don't, I think if, if it doesn't work with somebody's schedule, certainly I would not feel stressed about it, even, even one trustee.
Can you say the date again?
November fourth at six P M.
Next Tuesday, we're from today. Six P M?
Yes. So Billy and I will, we have a pre-meeting planned to kind of go over again, what are our talking points. We have the option of doing a public presentation, and if we do, it will be minimal. Just a couple of slides that kind of, we're only gonna do it if we need it. And then, of course, I'm prepared to answer questions that folks might have. So I'm, I'm looking forward to seeing what questions might come from the, the Village Finance Committee and kind of sharing, again, why this is happening, what our general budgeting model is, and, and what we're looking for in the future.
Yeah, other than that, the, other than that big thing.
Other than that, a big thing.
Yeah.
Saying other than the budget and also this budget.
Yeah, yeah, running out of money. Yeah, Cook County, yeah, it's a, it's a serious issue. No, no, it's, besides that, our next meeting's November twelfth, but we might not meet, well, that's a T B D because the budget's passed. And we do have things to talk about next year. We're talking about maybe raising the reserves. Our rainy day, we're already above it, like at fifty-three percent, and our target's forty-five to forty-seven. But should we increase that? That's a discussion we're gonna have probably at the beginning of next year. We're probably gonna take a break, a significant break, and then talk about these capital reserves and how that could look as we start talking about the, the facilities.
Still planning to discuss other sources of income?
Yes, and yes, that will be, you know, I'll work with you to talk about, to think about everything we should talk about in finance for the year. And of course, weekend as well. Mika, I don't know if you're, you're official member, are you part of it now?
No.
Okay. Yeah, we'll discuss our calendar for next year. But yes, we want to talk about the foundation as well and other diversifying our revenue sources. So it's not ninety-six percent property tax.
Okay. Governance Committee is going to meet on the third. Colin, you just mentioned the other Finance Committee meeting may or may not be on the twelfth. And then our next regular work meeting is the eighteenth. Does everybody have that correct on their calendars?
Mm-hmm.
Let me over here check in to make sure I've got it right.
Yes.
All right. Ellsworth, I'll turn it over to you for the Executive Director's report.
We've already covered a little bit of this, but I'll start with, there's, there's a lot of internal conversation going on about the library's response to ICE in the community. So I shared that we were updating our internal guidelines. That is an ongoing, complex conversation. In the past few weeks, I've, so we made an update to our internal guidelines, which we have available to staff in a variety of ways. And I've met with most library departments in person or virtually, depending on how the department meetings are run, to, to talk about what we're doing, why, and get staff feedback on that. One of the reasons we made updates was based on questions that staff and trustees and community members have asked us about what are you thinking about ICE, what are your plans about ICE? So being able to make those adjustments and then, and then help staff understand that. We've added a few example scripts that staff can use with, if ICE were to come and look at the library, and trying to do things that will help people feel as grounded as possible in addition to sharing strategies about what library administration is comfortable with in terms of staff protecting themselves. So if they, depending on how they feel, if ICE officers, ICE agents are in the building, what, what our guidelines for that would be. Those are extremely difficult conversations. They're emotional conversations. And the library is in a very high tension spot in terms of our identity as an organization dedicated to being open to all, to be hospitable, to be welcoming. We're in a position where those values are in conflict with, with what federal law is, is asking us to do. So that's not lots of dialogue with Asa Blenk, checking in with our peers, both in the, in the region, but also across the country, and figuring out what can we do that does not put individual staff or the board or the library at risk of, of federal level charges, but also lets the community know that we, we are who we are and that we, we do support all of our community. And again, these are, these are really difficult conversations. I give staff huge credit for coming to the table with questions and suggestions and ideas and being willing to be critical and being willing to be thoughtful in terms of what can and what can't we do. I appreciate the board's support in thinking through this and finding different ways that we can, can again express those values and be who we are so proud to be while also not increasing chances for harm by, by doing things that may be seen as obstructing or impure. I know there are continued, some continued community narrative around ICE having been in Oak Park Public Library and detained caregivers, things like that. Those rumors at this point are not true. We have not, we do not know if ICE had been in any OPPL facilities. We will communicate that if it does happen. As I mentioned in the policy airing the report, we, we're working on a public facing sort of update statement about our organizational response to ICE in the community. I wanted to reference that conference review of circulation records in, in that statement. So we were, we were very reluctant to submit, to publish that without having it updated. Now that we have it updated, we can continue moving forward on that.
Good question in this area. In any documents that you have, are you specifically talking about just ICE? Or are you talking about federal origins because it's expanded beyond that?
We typically talk about ICE, Border Patrol, others. We, we usually put name between one and three, and sometimes I'm sorry, or similar, to, to imply that it could be anyone doing that kind of info.
And we really appreciate the mindfulness that you've brought to this concern and our attention to staff and community.
It's a tough situation for everybody involved, and I think we'll, we'll keep trying to walk forward. But I think having a board passionate about preserving organizational values is a huge benefit to staff and the community. So we thank you for, for that boldness. We, we talked about where we are with the tax revenue payment already. Colin turned a great summary. And as was already mentioned, that presentation to the village, Finance Committee will be November fourth at six. And so just celebrated OPPL's presence at the Illinois Library Association Conference. I don't have actual staffs, but I believe that we may have had the most trustees of any library. Again, I don't have any real staffs, but in my heart, we have them. It was a real pleasure to spend trustee day there with, with five, five trustees? It's pretty amazing. We also had a really strong staff presence. And, and the idea of staff presenting was talked about at the Strategic Planning Retreat with the board. So I thought this was an appropriate place to really amplify all of the ways that, that staff from different levels of the organization were present and contributing. Most of the staff that went, I think, went the full conference. I only went one day, I think Billy went one day, but, but we had staff there for, for quite a bit of time. And it was really great. Janet Oates's poster presentation was on trustee day. So the trustees who went to the conference were able to, to engage with that. And I really appreciated that connection happening.
It was really great to be able to see and to see people coming up to Janet and saying, like, oh, I've always wanted to do this, how to do this. And so I, I felt maybe that poster sort of, you know, illustrated about being cutting edge. Like, oh, yes, like you are doing the thing that people are thinking and wanting to do. So I just wanted to talk with Jen.
Really personally, I would have gone there, you know, like a work trip. Not in this country. A little far. Hopefully, no six to overlap, but it sounds like it was amazing.
I was gonna ask, because we weren't able to see any of the presentations. Do we have like the information collated somewhere where we could see? I mean, unless Suzie, you want to come and get a presentation?
Suzie, go. I was on panel, and it was really dynamic and really gave energy in the room. And so it's hard to capture that. And, but I do know one of the things that Ginger organizes after our week conferences is kind of a shareback. So we all got together last week and kind of everybody who was there kind of reported what they did and what they saw. Yeah, and I actually had a couple members of the, the library start wanting to my presentation. So it was nice to see them.
See some of the faces out there.
Yeah.
And now that so many trustees have experienced, I already, if we want to think about doing a presentation, I was part of trustee day next year, I think. And we're more familiar.
We're talking about that in Peoria though.
Oh, it's in Peoria next year.
Don't sleep on Peoria, Billy and I had a great time.
We can, we can do a good budget though.
Um, yeah. May I have to park home?
Slightly less convenient.
Yeah.
It'll be back though in.
Is it every other year?
It's every other year.
Okay.
I heard this year that they actually stopped doing Springfield because they couldn't, it used to rotate between Springfield, Peoria, the three. And they couldn't find enough hotels in Springfield.
Oh, in the capital?
Her I L A is going to have hotels. So you gotta take a turn. So you gotta take a turn.
I have had, both, my last two jobs have been statewide, so I have seen, I, I'm thinking about the people in Effingham and like, oh, I feel bad for them.
I also very much enjoyed the keynote speaker.
Oh, yeah. He was awesome. I got a chance to talk to him a little bit more, um, since we've been there. And I think we're gonna see some really fun things, and I think it would be great if we did get the chance to collaborate. And, but also just seeing the representation that he has there, and then to know he's also a local librarian is like the cherry on top. Like, this is who you encounter when you go to the library. Like, you can find yourself. And he, he made a really good point about, you, you don't always see people who look like him in the library, but that there is value in that and what he's bringing and how he sees what he's bringing as being essential to, to preserving everybody's story. And I, it was very fun.
And then, and then the importance of libraries in his life and his history, really total of both in kind of the, you know, the, um, more luxury kind of part of the narrative, and then also in the pieces that he performed. Um, it was really, yeah, um, something wonderful to, to hear those kind of details. Um, that we don't, you know, we just, they're not for rather than, uh, experiences.
You want to have a table at the tattoo conference?
Oh, yeah.
Great. This requires a message.
So when I went to the tattoo conference over the summer, there was all sorts of book and literacy merch, like everywhere. Like book pins and buttons and shirts and everything. So we were like, maybe we need to have a table there next year.
Are we all getting matching book tattoos?
Uh, sure. They're gonna have to be small, small. So, yeah, we joked about.
I don't know, maybe if it's during library card signing.
We're, well, it's not in Oak Park, so we're gonna have, we'd have to like take some friends.
It was, it was the same convention center.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
All right, uh, Ellsworth, anything else before we switch over to strategic priorities? Where are you doing? Um, I did wanna say, uh, thank you to the staff by seeing a couple of notes in here about, um, extra effort and pivots that we have done to make sure that all of our patrons feel comfortable attending programs and that if they do not feel comfortable attending them in person, um, that we are making it possible for them to attend virtually. So thank you very much. I know that, I, I know from when we did that at the beginning of COVID, it's not always as easy as people think it is to shift. Um, but thank you very much for making that a priority.
We, we do have an update on the, um, so we moved the program that was scheduled for this Saturday, um, with the, the author in Parks District, Dominican, um, and a few other community groups. And staff have been able to pull together, um, what, what we're calling a whistle mania program for that day. So Saturday, where the room was reserved for that program, there'll be, um, packing whistle kits, um, with, um, some, some additional, we'll do some material displays and, uh, things like that in the veterans' room. A, a really cool tie-in is the staff in, um, in our creative studio found a pattern for a 3D printed whistle, um, which is, again, a cool tie-in to our, our resources. So I think we'll have the 3D printer in the space, uh, so that people can see it working. We ordered whistles as well because we weren't sure what the demand would be and we wanted to, to make sure we had enough. But we hope to, you know, inspire people to, to connect and to, to see kind of the way we do things in a couple of different ways. Again, I, I give staff so much credit for being able to sort of vision through, um, the complexity and the emotions of, of this kind of pivot and being able to, to turn that into a positive. Uh, so we're, we're pleased to be doing that. Uh, and I think we will also use that opportunity to amplify some of the, the Know Your Right to resources that we have and, and other pieces, um, that fit around this. Um, I don't remember the, the number we ordered, the 300 whistles. And we think we can make two or 300, so. And, and they're, I brought my example. They're, they're really cool. They're just, they can go there, um, when we're gearing, um, or, or a lanyard, um, and again, made in-house with our, our regular equipment.
And I think when you ordered the whistles, they also ordered, um, Leonard's and Q rings.
Yes. And so there'll be a few different, and then probably most of you have seen the informational zine that kind of explains how whistles are being used in our community. Um, so there'll be folding those and things like that. Another really neat, um, sort of layer to this is, um, Nora Sanchez, who's our Latin multicultural librarian, um, has a, a grant from the McGowan Foundation right now to do different kinds of programming. So she was able to leverage some of those funds to support this program, which is, is just another, um, another way to see things coming together, um, to do the, the work that we want to do.
What time is the, the, the event?
It's scheduled for 2 to 4:30, but we may publicize it as 2 to 4, just knowing that sometimes the end time.
Yeah, it's pronounced 2 to 4 on the calendar.
And it'll be in the veterans' room.
And it is on the calendar already?
Because this was a pivot from what we expected, um, we will do the, the marketing that we can do. But it, um, you know, there'll be pieces that, that we probably won't do print, obviously, you're wrong. You know, there'll be, we're gonna do what we can do, and that's not because of any suppression. That's because it was a, a last minute change. Um, and we, it, it feels like, um, we're, again, we'll reach the people that we can reach and depending on community response, if we need to repeat the program, we, we sure can.
Are there, um, any organizations in the community or in surrounding communities that are coming to be part of that, or is it just?
I, I think Nora has reached out to a few places. It's, there are so many events going on that I'm not confident that at this stage we will, um, but I know at one point she was also reaching out to see if people could, if we could get a speaker and things like that, but I don't have any confirmation there. And then, this is a, this is another just really dense report. When I was going through to highlight things, I was checking everything. Um, but I do think that the collaboration with the Parks District, um, with the local artists at Dole, um, you know, is, is certainly worthy of a call-out. Um, I really like those collaboration projects, and we can sort of celebrate community making at the same time. That gives like a real win. And then, um, Rob Simmons, our director of social services and public safety, has put together a pilot program, a legal wellness clinic, um, to, to offer free of charge for legal check-ins and legal services to community members. The first clinic will be in November at the library, and then we'll, we'll see how that collaboration might evolve.
What kind of law?
So it's described as regular legal checkups, um, that can prevent crises before they happen. Um, so I think they specifically call out navigating issues such as housing instability, public benefits denial, domestic violence. I, my impression is that, um, there'll be different levels of legal support that could happen depending on the issue, but that, that any issue could be brought.
Would it be like one individual or a team? Or you're not sure?
I'm not sure.
I'm looking forward to the details. I've, I've seen other libraries do that, but asked, um, it's like, there's so many areas of law that it's, it's often, it's probably not like a tree.
And I'm hoping to, um, to come and, and as appropriately as possible, sort of observe at least the, the setup and kind of get a sense of how the flow will be, and I'm happy to bring those details back if I don't remember.
Did we say, did you say there was a date?
It'll be in November, but I don't know if, if we have a specific date.
For us.
For those. Um, but we, I can pass that on.
Yeah, I just have someone who I think would do it.
It's kind of thing. I feel like we all know someone who could better it, which is such a, it's such a, it's really great.
I love it when that kind of thing happens in a public library because we, um, we are accessible and people are often comfortable coming here, um, as opposed to other, you know, well-intentioned about maybe there are more barriers to, to other locations. We did a staff spotlight of the middle-on high school services team. This is a, a really dynamic, um, hard-working, unified department that just has true passion for their, their service areas. We, we mentioned the facilities team, um, identifying a sump pump that was not working in the parking garage. That may feel like a really small detail, but I think it speaks to the proactive maintenance that's done by our, our small but, um, but efficient facilities team. Um, being able to repair those things when it was not an emergency situation is a huge cost savings and, and, and is less likely to disrupt the public service of the library. September was library card sign-up month, and we called out sort of, um, we had more than 530 accounts created or re-registered in September, which is significantly higher than our normal, um, normal rates. And that's an initiative that brings in, I would say, all of the library departments together. And I'm not sure if anybody in the room was able to attend, um, the author visit with Tanika Johnson and Dr. Maria Kreisler. Um, but we had a, a good turnout to talk about the book, Don't Know Stories, The Separation and How It Disrupted. Um, and that we've gotten lots of positive community feedback about that in terms of repeating that type of event, um, or even bringing back the same speakers. But like I said, it's.
Is she a vaulted, like, uh, vaulted city project? So, yes, but I'm so, I'm so sad to miss that. I love her. I follow her stuff. Darn. You guys do so much behind me. I miss that, right? It's like, okay.
And, yeah, but like I said, the whole report is dense. If you didn't have time to, to read through it before the meeting, I, I strongly suggest taking a look. Uh, if any questions come up, just let us know.
I had, I had two questions. One is only tangentially related, but I don't want to forget it. Um, one, I know during the strategic planning meeting, we talked about changing the, the top line filter to being othering and belonging. Is that still something that we're in the process of doing? Is that something we can do before the end of the year? Or what is the process around us making that change?
Yeah, I think where we are with that, I sent the, the session notes to you and Suzanne, sort of, um, inquiring about next steps. So once we have more of a plan for, do we want Mallory to come back and work with the, the group again, either in a public meeting or, um, how that might look? And, and then I think that part, that conversation can be part of that. It would be a, a simple logistical change, but I think it's the philosophy part that we want to make sure we put the timing to.
Yeah, I, I'm not worried about like the font changes. It's more, when we change that, are we ready here to understand what that means as well?
And part of what I thought were it was the, um, sort of the, the Gantt territory, um, that if that is not included, then we can certainly add it, but it kind of walked through what, what those next steps could look like. And Mallory is, is ready to reengage if we, if we would like her to.
I wonder if, um, I believe the othering and belonging, um, organization was something that Christina and Annie were raising. And I wonder if maybe I could be with the two of you to like get your input on that and kind of get up to speed on it, and then we present to the boards. Does that make sense? As a way to kind of work.
Maybe just one of us.
I mean, it could be an ad hoc committee.
Oh, yeah.
But you could still have it as a committee. I mean.
I mean, it could be part of the advocacy committee work too.
Yeah, I mean, I do, you just have to, you just have to have an agenda and.
Yeah.
Tell it, bring the notes back. That's the only.
Well, I think if it was easier for the then, it could go into governance too, really. I mean, it's about, it's about reporting out, so I think either one would be a fit.
Just moving that kind of moving forward.
Yeah, making an official, like, meeting is not that big a deal.
Are you guys okay coordinating that and then just letting us know so that we can get an agenda out?
Absolutely. Yeah. I just, I'm, I'm excited about the idea of moving that forward. Uh, I think if, you know, kind of then that author will inform, go sponsor about how to bring Mallory and then get, and get us on board.
Yeah.
Yes, it's very good.
My other question was, and this was something we did before COVID, is we actually used to rotate our board meetings to the other branches. Um, and I wanted to sort of judge the feasibility of that, um, especially since you just said sometimes folks there feel a little bit isolated. I'm guessing the community members around there, for me, are going to come and probably comment, and that's something that they wanted to do. Um, so I would like to, if the board is okay, I would like us to look into a few months where we can have our meetings at either Dole or these.
It's fun. It's great.
We have to bring that hole.
That hole. They'll have to ask OT how that goes.
Yes, um, we'll, we'll have to do a lot of coordination. We'll probably have to look at the agenda beforehand and make sure, like, we don't need a ton of staff members on hand for that meeting so that we're not asking them to leave work and then go to another branch to do a long meeting. But, um, it was really beneficial before for us to be able to see.
Yeah, sounds good.
The staff.
And I think that fits with some of what we've been talking about too, in terms of Dole and trying to like get more, um, energy and progress, um, on Dole. So I think that would be nice.
I'm confident that the technology and the staff presence would not be a challenge. Who, who would be able to make that move?
I just want to, the, the staff spotlight with the middle-on high school service team, I, I want to just echo that every time I walk, you know, because that's my jam. Whenever I see the kids there, they're so happy and comfortable. It's just, I really, really appreciate them, and I find that to be very special, um, in our library, so.
It's a, it's a remarkable group of staff. I think if, if you are in the library and you have time to swim through those service areas, you will be greeted, um, and they will be happy to speak with you. It's, it's a, I come from a team service background, and I did team services here the last time I was here. And seeing the growth of those departments is, um, it's, it's magical. Um, I think that, especially with our significant building changes, so still doing the, the most we can with the building, the work for this. Um, that's really taken in stride, and, um, Latanya, the manager of that department, has a, a national presence. She, uh, she and I were both just at the ULC conference in Cincinnati. Um, and, and I think that we should all be, be really aware of how fortunate we are and how fortunate the teams are. But again, if you're not familiar with those areas, they're on the second floor, um, on either end of the floor. And I, I really encourage you, um, it's especially active after school, but if you come at a different time, you may have more staff time. Um, because they're more, more busy than students, but, um, it's, it's a really special part of the library, and we're so happy to have you here.
I didn't realize you guys did Thanksgiving here. I'm really curious about that, because I do see kids at the high school who don't have a place to go under Thanksgiving, and so. I think I just wanted to say that.
Library misuse statistics. Um, I did want to, I mean, call out for folks at home. Um, we saw a drop in digital accounts, but I feel like that is because we had more people come in during library sign-up month and get full accounts.
A year-to-year comparison, no?
No, this is a quarter, Q2 to Q3.
Which, um, sorry.
Um, so I'm on.
Billy's trying to interject also.
I mean, Ellsworth has the answer. It's, um, uh, it's, it's in noted below on it, um. As of August thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, new digital online accounts are no longer being created. Patrons may now either sign up for a full access physical library card in person, um, at any location, or sign up for a digital version of full access library card online. So like, it's no longer, as soon as stat will drop off because it's no longer, the digital accounts will no longer be created. But they, I think they're, talk about how the new user accounts are created to note if it was a physical card or a digital card. This is the future of this report.
So it's just shifted to where, uh, the distinction is where you get the card, like the web?
Yeah, right now the digital access card, but previously the digital access card you could get was like a, just like a digital only access card. It wasn't a full access card. Now, since August thirteenth, the, um, uh, you, whether you get a digital card or a physical card, it's a full access card. That's, that's a change. Yeah, in, in stats, it looks like, you know, it didn't just drop off the base of the earth. Like, no, it's because, because it's no longer applicable. But, um, it's actually a really great change for, um, we offer full access to patrons who want access either digitally. You can just go, go through our website or, um, uh, or come into any location.
Right, so it's actually increasing accessibility.
Yes, yes.
Wow, that online resource you, you use year to years.
Does anybody else have any other questions, comments?
It just looks like on program attendance, it's sort of like dip and then goes back up. Is that just sort of like lower attendance at programs during the summer? And then January, September, yeah, it looks like a dip. Did you guys see kind of a dip in attendance at programs during the summer?
No, I would say the opposite. I would, I would say our attendance up to one to zero, I wouldn't say.
Yeah, um, see, you're at peak. I'd have to look into, that's it. A trend.
You kind of did get it looking to a just crazy.
And we'll see for adult services, like our, our high programming or the spring and the fall, we do a ton of things on there. And, you know, children's does summer reading, which is always good in the summer. And so, uh, but I would say our adult program peak times are in, um, the spring and then after October in a number of huge weeks.
Mm-hmm.
So, yeah, trying to think, you know, um, it's always sometimes there's a program that can offset things, um. Those of you on the board that were there, we kept having to revisit the fact that we counted statistics on the eclipse. And we had thousands of people because we had a program.
Oh, okay.
And so then it was like the siege peak. And we're like, okay, we're never going to take that. This is what they wanted.
So, it could have been a program that had a really high attendance and that kind of, you know, run, while it's setting. I'd be curious, we haven't been doing the stats that long, so it's like I can't compare the chart year over year, but, um, maybe not sure if we can look at it.
Do you have a sense of like where that peak, like where in the?
I don't know. It's kind of hard to like guess because there's no month associated with it.
April.
It looks like, I would say, April.
We could do a more full report, though.
Yeah, we could take a look at it and see where, um, you know, Mallory's pulling that data from.
And I think, I think there'd be interest from staff, board, and community to look at.
I think we talked about this before, but like getting a more robust, like, twenty twenty-five review in either January or February, where we can look at like a full year's worth of
Like an hour.
Yeah, yeah. Like, uh, just a little bit more in-depth on some of the things that we see monthly. I think that might be more useful than like trying to see it in November and December because then we'll get to see the whole year, unless anybody disagrees with that.
No, I agree on that. I think we used to do that in January, February.
I think you guys made it in January and we saw it in the February meeting?
That would make sense.
It was done one year when I was here and I wasn't done again, but.
Okay.
I think we're all, we're all.
I think, I think we have enough to, to try something different. And we can try something, and if it resonates, great. And if not, we can try to give them.
How do you count building visits?
We just had this conversation. So, we have, uh, we have door counters, uh, at all three locations, right? Uh, and then most of those have a little bit of built-in, like, how do we assume that some people went in and out seven times and some people went in and out one time? Uh, but mostly it's based on door count, like door counters.
I was going to ask if you count my child seven times when he runs.
You know what's about it? Sometimes I go to the library twice a day.
Uh, additions and separations. We don't have any questions there. Does anybody else have any questions there? Um, written there were no staff changes. Moving on, we will look at the financial reports. Finance committee folks, do you have any? I know you guys are busy with the budget, so.
I don't think we had any ability of comments. I mean, because we kind of went through the, the most important ones where that, Cook County's not paying us and, and finishing the, the budget. But I think this was just business as usual, right?
Yeah, I think, um, just for the microbook here, I think there's two, at least two important things to know as trustee, really in our financials. If you're looking at the statement of revenue and expenditure, which I realize it's, it's the page number, it starts on page forty-eight. So on page forty-eight, our revenue is where it should be minus the tax revenue. So, if we had tax revenue coming in right now, um, we would be much closer to one hundred percent revenue for, for the year. So revenue is, is generally as expected minus the, 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 the huge outlier, the property taxes. For operating expenses, if you go to the bottom of page, bottom of page fifty, I'll see four or five pages, I'm not sure if it's important. In the lower right-hand corner, there's our total operating expenses. We are seventy-five percent of the way through the year. At, at September thirtieth, we're seventy-five percent of the way through the year, and we're seventy-three percent expended. That's about two percent under, under for year-to-date. That two percent translates to a little over two hundred thousand dollars of income in being under budget at this point of the year, um, which is as expected. So I think tho- those are the things that sort of kind of take away from, from us. We're on track. We just need those property tax dollars to come in. Hey, do you want me to drive that one home one more time? Like, how, how would you know, like, how we're doing with our cash? Look on page thirty-seven. On page thirty-seven, our operating cash is listed there. So page thirty-seven at the top, our ending operating cash available at the end of September was a little over five million dollars. But, yeah, it sounds great. We gave five million dollars, you know, until, until our, but the real account you should be watching is the Illinois Funds Investment Account. The Illinois Funds Investment Account is really where, um, the property tax money comes in and where we withdraw from for our operating. That's a little over three million dollars. If we spend one million dollars a month in operating, how many months can we operate it? So, Illinois Funds will get us to the end of December, and then you got to start closing owner accounts, withdrawing those funds. So that's why it's important that we get, um, a plan in place for a loan with the village, or, I'm, I'm sorry, the tax accepting warrant, or the, um, or a direct loan from them, or having the property tax come in, come in, um, as scheduled. So, that's, that's just how you know where we are with cash. But remember, this was September thirtieth. We're already at end of October, so guess what? We are, that, that Illinois Funds account is down to two million, two point one five million, so.
Yeah.
As a-
It's-
When is it, sorry, go ahead.
No, I was gonna say as a, as a thought exercise, because we just looked at the budget. So if we were to somehow try to figure out how to stop things, close things, to recoup cash, seventy-five percent of our budget goes to people. So seventy-five percent of our budget isn't even in that conversation, correct?
Well, so here's what you're, like, if, we're talking, talking about this internally at our leadership team, we've talked about this at our leadership team meetings, is like, as much as you can, try to, try to slower stop discretionary spending. But even, even if you're able to do that, it buys you maybe, maybe one payroll, maybe one payroll. Because seventy-five percent, like, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars a month of that million is people and benefits. So, it's, it's like, yeah, sure, don't do that program. It would cost you fifty bucks. Like, but it doesn't, it's not, it's not going to, to turn this around. Yeah, so we're having these conversations internally. This, I, I, I don't mean to create panic, just, I think it's just a sense of urgency. And, and we have the plan. We're doing what we're supposed to, going through all the steps to ensure that the funds-
I just wanted to make sure since, you know, we are going to go speak to the village about the, the, I'm not going to get the, the T A W. Thank you. And because we have been talking about this, and we did just talk about the budget, like, making sure folks understand, like, this isn't a matter of, okay, if we run out of money, then we close the doors and all of a sudden we're not spending anything anymore. Like, really, when we're looking at this, there's really only that, that discretionary, discretionary piece that would even be in play for us to recoup any money. And that's, like we were saying with the increases, that's, that's a drop once you're not looking at, at people and benefits, so.
The way that we are structured, the only way to, to recoup, secondarily, resources is through reduction of the people costs. I mean, that's, that's what everybody is saying here. Um, and I think it's also really important to note that we have a fund balance policy, and we are following that fund balance policy. This, this is an anomaly in the system of budgeting that has worked for a long time. It is dependent on these, these property taxpayers coming in, isn't working right now. So I think that we kind of can't overstate that because if you were, were new to the conversation, I think a logical question would be, how did you get in this situation? But again, this, this is not any typical funding model for a municipal, public library, and it's worked really well for a long time. If we want to make adjustments so that, um, there would be additional options on the table, those are long-term discussions that require increasing parts of the budget that we have to put that money in. So that would mean asking for more property tax from the community or other things like that to start to build, um, a larger cash reserve.
Yeah, our cash, our cash available at the beginning of the year was over six million dollars. And, that, which is exceeding our, let me talk about fund balance policy. How much, how much of our unrestricted fund balance should we start putting in the year with? Our target is somewhere between, I think it's like forty-two and forty-eight percent, um, fifty percent being six months. We had fifty-four percent. So like, we're exceeding our fund balance policy and still not, not enough cash. So when six months of cash available is not enough to sustain you, then what is? You know, I think that's, so.
Right, and then the conversation becomes if we have so much cash that we're holding on to. That's also a taxpayer question of why do we have so much of our cash we're holding on to? So, at forty-eight percent, six months is conservative and solid, but.
And it, and it has been historically, it has been historically.
Well, they, what is, when is the, you know, the schedule coming in the fall typically?
Bills are usually issued on, on August first with a due date of September first, or I might be misremembering that. It could be a due date of August first. It hasn't been on time in Cook County. So, like, August first, I think is typically a due date.
When do we see them?
Like, usually end of August, early September.
Pretty much right away.
Yeah, pretty mu- yeah, because a lot of, a lot of homeowners pay their property taxes through their escrow accounts. And so, and that's automatically, as soon as a bill is generated, they'll automatically, um, we'll see the payment. Yeah, typically we would have had about four and five million dollars of revenue come in already at this point in the year. Or, yeah.
Do we, like, the conversation with the village, are, do we expect them to sign now, I guess, for that extension? Is this a, I guess when I first heard about it, I thought like it was a given, but is it something that like we do mean to really advocate for?
It's due to us to be asking for this. I think that there's, I believe the village has an interest in maintaining public service. And so, our approach has been to, to do every step of the process, to, uh, to be the best active partner in a conversation that we can be. Um, and I think that we will approach the meeting of the finance committee as informed and prepared as we can. My hope is that, that they approve this after some conversation. Um, I think that they are in a similar position. They, they have their own fund balance policy. They have their own practice around that. Um, but we all rely on, on the tax structure working.
I mean, that's, that's the problem. Everybody in Cook County is in the same, everybody, everybody in Cook County doesn't have their money, so every bank, every, anyone who can, everyone's going to have their hat in hand.
So I think, like, as the library, we have been particular to not have fees to ma- to maintain the size of free third space in ways that some other, the governing bodies have not. And so, and the fact that it's so reliant on, like, such a large percentage on, on people costs. So, I think.
And we're also structured such that we have to go through the village, correct, even to, to get a lot.
Yes, that's, that's the, like, why are we going to the village at all? Because we have to.
Not a very, not a very.
Wintrust, um, who we're working with to get, to secure the T A W, um, because we, because a library, as a village library, cannot levy its own taxes, they, they need to, they need the village then to sign off on this loan for, for, or this, um, tax accepting warrant for us.
And I appreciate the village, um, taking the time to meet. We've had multiple conversations with them, lots of email with Billy and Linda and myself. And I, I really value that they're asking us for the context that will help them understand sort of the whole picture. And I also really appreciate the opportunity to speak to the finance community. That, that all feels collaborative and healthy, as much as it can be in this situation, which is, is sort of outside of any of our control, so.
Yeah, and this isn't through poor, poor control or poor spending. Um, this is, this is a result of property taxes not, not being distributed, not being billed and collected as, as planned.
It's unfortunate that the timing of this conversation and next year's budget happen at the same time. I think that, that definitely is an opportunity for, um, for a different kind of, kind of community engagement around the process and, and their practices. But we're, we're very, um, very willing to, to talk through kind of whatever level of detail people need. And, and I think it's, I think it's, at the end of the day, I think it's a good thing for people to know how the library's budget operates and kind of what the, what the moving pieces look like. So, um, we will, of course, report as promptly as possible on how the meeting on the fourth goes and what decisions we really know of from the.
Of course, you may not need to go for it because we may all show up.
Ellsworth, they bring up, uh, as an aside, that if we don't, if the village, uh, we could become a district library, right? That's a big, huge thing that, that's, yeah, this is.
A district library can, um, can levy its own taxes. So we would, we would be able to do things a little bit differently. That would be, um, a significant philosophical and logistical conversation. But it is good to know that there are multiple models in our state, um, and each of those models comes with different nuance to the budget and the financing.
Any other questions before we move to approve the dispersments? I will entertain a motion for approving the resolution on dispersments. All right, moved and seconded, all in favor? All votes. Abstentions? All right, moving on to additional reports. IGAV?
Uh, yes. Okay, so with IGAV, a few things. I wrote down things that I will not forget. Um, one that I wanted to bring up that is not from the last meeting, but there's been so much collaboration that it's come up and we're sharing it with IGAV whenever we win some study mail, but we are having, we were all- we were all very upset, or many electeds were very upset by the cancellation of the, of that authority due to ISIS presence, um, for the affrontance. And so, a group of electeds talked about like having a meetup where we just walk through the community and visit um, ourselves and show our respects. And so I'll follow up with the board of, uh, in Bagnoa. But that'll be Saturday at one-thirty. And we, we have a meeting place, but I don't remember where it is now. I had a piece of paper that had my notes on, but I don't have it anymore. The other news was that at the last meeting, Jenna from the village presented on um, no ice zone. So that's an ordinance that's been getting a lot of attention in other communities, Chicago passed some ordinance. Evanston just did, I think, yesterday, and then Berwin also actually did. So, um, it's been getting traction in different communities nearby, basically it's just that they can't come on their property. And so for the village, it's, I think it's a very meaningful measure, but village doesn't actually own that much land, it doesn't own that much property. And so it, it's, it was brought to IGAV to, to ask kind of like, could we think about this for other, um, governing bodies? And so we're discussing and we're gonna keep that in discussion and kind of work on that on the backend and hopefully have some updates next month. And then, I mean, we still have the, I hope whenever we do, I think we talked about this previously, but we've talked about like all the meetings, you know, the night, tonight is one of those nights as well. Um, the township just passed actually the no ice, um, thing tonight, so that's exciting. They did, and um, what's that?
You're in animals league.
You're in animals league, beautiful. Um, and so it's like, I think IGAV, we're, we're struggling with, like, we understand that none of these policies are enough and can we, can we, um, do it to protect our people and to kind of for future litigation, so. So, um, yeah, that was, that came up, that was a big point of discussion, a friend of us on Saturday and then scheduling, so meetings, like I think when we are in the new year and we talk about, or I don't remember if we did this in December, but when we talk about two thousand twenty-six calendar meeting dates, I think I'd just like to talk about changing our, our dates. And so if that is the time to have that discussion, that's fine, but I do think it needs to be a priority because we, our community is active and they are wanting to participate in all these things and they can't because we have, like, I can't attend Tuesday's meeting because I'm actually gonna be at a different board meeting. So I, yeah, things are happening, collaboration is everything, but people want to do everything together, which is challenging in and of itself.
November is when.
November is when we do it, so maybe we can have a discussion about it. And then we can talk about rotating and all of that. Um, Annie, did I mention?
Um, we are also discussing topics for our semi-annual forum.
Yes.
Uh, but IGAV does, so that's in process, you know, as well as a potential website, which is something that we've mentioned before, but those are still things that are in the works. And we just add that the village ordinance as well as a lot of the township pasts tonight, a big part of them is an educational piece and taking proactive steps to provide information to the community. So, um, it's sort of a multifaceted effort and recognition of some of the complexity that Kristina mentioned, and I know Ellsworth, you were talking about just now as well.
Yeah, thanks for the website, that is in the most, in the works as well, so. And I'm with Ellsworth and team and, um, now we're drafting stuff, so lots of movement with IGAV, it's been exciting but busy.
Which is a good thing.
Which is.
There's a lot of untapped potential.
It, it is. I think the time really requires collaboration, but, um, everybody wants to be a part of it now, and that's its own challenge.
I also think that we're really approaching it as a learning space, where, you know, this is a place where we can build knowledge and also, you know, foster collaboration, but also build knowledge and maybe systems or institutional knowledge that, you know, an all-elected official sort of kind of go, maybe serve terms. So we're also thinking about how to make sure that we can build that knowledge base that can be accessible over time.
I love this semi-annual forum, so typically IGAV historically has done like one internal, one external facing, um, presentation. And so with the first one, we're hoping to do it in the spring or late winter and, um, before trustees, before electeds. So, yeah, if there are subjects that like, like we were talking legal counsel, like if there's things that would help us do our jobs better as an elected official, feel free to talk to me or Annie and we can bring that back, that'll be something we talk about the next meeting. We had one on like social media, um, navigating it legally before, but, yeah, just thinking broadly about it. We have a tiny budget.
Um, COG, I didn't get an email from COG, was there a meeting? Did you, did you get any invite? I don't think they met this, but I will check in again. Uh, Planet Green?
I have an update from Planet Green. Matt, um, the director of facilities attended. Good meeting notes from Planet Green. Uh, most of this month's discussion centered around D ninety-seven's plans to address sustainability items in their near fut- near future projects, including LED replaced months HVAC electrification work and food waste efforts. Specified that D ninety-seven plans to implement show tables during launch programs and is working on ways to characterization, ways sorting and developing standard operating procedures for school mealtime waste reduction. An update was provided regarding the development of the Village of Broadbury's energy plant. Targeted to the saturation to a forty-five percent villagewide reduction in emissions by twenty thirty. The Village of River Forest gave an update on their EV charging infrastructure expansion. Plans to add fourteen total EV charging ports by the end of twenty twenty-five. And then, um, River Forest's report included updating the number of registered EV, uh, electric vehicles in Oak Park and River Forest. Oak Park currently has one thousand four hundred and ninety EVs registered, River Forest has three hundred and fifty-four. This accounts for about five point five percent of light-duty vehicles in the R P R F area. Happy to take questions back, but that's the information that I have.
Do we have an update from Friends?
Even when we were in the finance committees.
We went to like the last background.
Um, it was a good meeting, we met last Monday. Uh, we went, they had a fall social on the twenty-second, so that I met with Russ today and he said it was very good, very lively, they played bingo. They're really jazzed about their Between the Lines newsletter, um, so you can sign up on our website on the Friends page. Um, kind of, you know, talking about things for next year, um, they're kind of starting to brainstorm some work ideas that they could sell. And then we picked our dates for the next year, which are the third, third Mondays. And, yeah, so those are all in the calendar, but, yeah, we don't meet again until January.
Um, Outwood purpose?
The gala is this Saturday and it looks like there are still tickets available, which is unusual, if, um, there would be. It's at, um, it is at, uh, the Garfield Park Conservatory, which I'm really excited about, I love being there at night.
Yeah.
And Crystal, are you going, if anybody?
Yeah, we're going too.
Are you?
Everything is happening across Saturday.
We'll take pictures.
Oh, yeah, take pictures.
Make sure you're best. All right, uh, collaboration for early childhood.
Um, you know, look my year, but I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna attend the lunch and breakfast thing, so.
All in one.
From a mess, and Nancy's gone, so.
I would say they did have their, um, resource fair here on Saturday and I heard it was a wild success.
It was awesome.
What's the breakfast lunch, the chicken?
They thought, you know, to, to board members, um, they do it annually, like, uh, I think it's like their policy, kind of brunch, and they kind of give a status update, I've never been before, so.
All right, um, having concluded our agenda, if there are no other items, I will entertain a motion for adjournment. So. All those in favor?
Aye.
All the first, extensions? I just want everyone to check their clock and check these. Four minutes to cut his candle.
Look at us.
Ahead of schedule on budget night.